All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Go for it.
Great. All right, let's get started. Welcome to the September 21st regular meeting of Fayette County Commission. Let's go ahead and I'm gonna have to get off here, stand, stand for the pledge of allegiance and Clerk Holly lead us, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America's change, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You're with me due to my logistics challenges here. All right, do we have any exonerations orders to combine?
Come on.
You don't have to try and stand by my permission.
Yeah, get to the mic if you want to. Or you can give them to me and that way I can.
And I asked Ruth to bring my stamp so she could stamp my name.
Okay. Are these refunds or?
Yeah, that's refunding this one's refund. It's always gonna be two copies of that. And just one of that one.
Okay. Tom, your personal. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
And Allison, we have two refunds.
What are the amount?
Yeah, the first one is to Joyce Knuckles for total sixty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. The second one is to Paul McClery for a hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. So I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve those. Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Do you have any combined or? Okay.
So that, that item's finished then?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to second half of payroll, I move, we approve?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And John, what's the date?
October thirtieth.
September.
I mean, September thirtieth.
She said, Amy, what's the date? All right, so. Vouchers and invoices, Ruth, do we have anything significant on there?
No, not over here.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve those.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we don't have the meeting minutes, although Amy did send them all to me. I just didn't have my computer with me. So estate settlements?
Yes.
Allison, we have just one page of estate settlements. Seventh. And I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve these.
Okay, I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so let's see what time. All right, Ruth.
All right. The first thing is committee matter of the red trail. And it's the contract. This is just the contract you guys approved for ALL for the matter of the red trail work.
No. Oh, no, I did that all. Chapman technique will not. Sorry, that's the.
And what else for you to contract?
Basically, a form contract on you, funding association with international architects. It's actually been relegated from the street board here in Washington, it's been upheld. It has the usual objectionable arbitration clause. But at the end of the day, I mean, I, you know, they drafted the contract that you want to work on. I don't look necessarily in a position to hang over the arbitration clause. But the arbitration is, there's a one thing, that was the issue in the last contract. And it is now.
I can't hear you very well, Anthony, I think I know what you're getting at. I thought we struck that provision.
Robert just showed me, it's been amended, so now we can, we can go coordinate over it.
I think it was the issue we had. I can't remember where it was changed that had the issue.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's been changed so that now we get to litigate. Where the confidence is.
Yes, and that was, that was, this is the same contract we used the last time and
and the reality is settlement, what, we have some type of dispute. Which hopefully that won't, that won't be an issue.
No, we do it rest of the world.
That's for everybody.
Did we approve this upon changes originally or for?
Yeah, that's already been changed in the same way your last contract, this contract has already been awarded. So if you want them to work, you gotta.
I could have been asked. Yeah, I didn't know what we did.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the contract I was presenting. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's supposed to be Allison's.
Okay, Allison, very good.
All three copies.
Yes, anything we approve, Ruth, you can stamp my name today as if I were there.
All right.
Now, the contractor, it's simply payment performance law here directly. And I like to have the, I thought, I wanted to include the originals in that contract because it's a race seal. But Ruth, I believe you kept the copy. So she, she had an original. We're photocopies.
I didn't write out the name entirely.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it. And we anticipate the project to stretch into the spring. Have it in the fall here. And, but I will definitely keep, keep you all up to speed on the rep.
Thank you. Until we have our progress meetings.
We'll handle them monthly unless there's something significant we need to deal with.
Okay, can you make the commission aware when your progress meetings will be there? If I have nothing going on, I'll get the control.
Okay. I'm a little contractor and the first meeting was a free strike conference. That's about same.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we ready, Ruth?
Yeah, so the next thing is a request from Golly River PSD to appoint Nathan Ramsey to fill the vacancy. So he lives in Summersville.
Summersville, that area is serviced out of Summersville, Ohio, but it was in Golly River PSD's Brooklyn.
So it would be to the term of August and December 31st, point one seven.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment.
I'll second it. We, we've had trouble getting people to serve on that board, so I'm happy he stepped up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the next thing is a letter regarding funding related to Golly River PSD water project and I think Carl Harris brought this letter, the draft letter, stating that the commission was not, did not have the funding available to fund that project, or you were, John?
Yes, I am.
There's any more details?
It's just the same thing that, that Leslie talked to us about during our admin meeting. And I had forgotten that Ms. Taylor stepped out during that portion, she had an important call. So we, Tom talked with her more in detail yesterday and was able to help her answer her questions.
Yeah, I understand it now, I appreciate that. And I thought we were talking about Golly River PSD in the, in the exchange, but but yeah, I agree that we don't, we definitely don't have the funding to, to help them with that request and hopefully the state will.
Yeah, and there's gonna be more coming at our October the fifth meeting requests for field speaking.
Oh, is that the one you were talking about then? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So if y'all are good with it, we'll print that on letterhead or put it on letterhead and stand your signatures after the meeting.
Yeah.
Let's go ahead. I move, we approve it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's try to squeeze in another one or two, Ruth.
All right, the next one is the region for planning and development council adoption of the 2022 hazard mitigation plan. Is Leslie or am I?
Amanda, are you on mute?
I am, good morning, everyone, how are you?
Good morning, Amanda.
So what we have says the, the region for hazard mitigation plan update, this is a plan update that we do yearly, but the, the five-year plan update. And what this does, it covers the entire region, covers Fayette County as a whole as well, and all of the towns and municipalities within that. So this would allow, so should a natural disaster occur, everyone is covered. And once this is approved, any FEMA funding that would be needed, you would be eligible for.
Okay. Did anybody? I was just gonna say, anybody have any questions or concerns about it?
It's pretty straightforward, I don't have any questions.
I read it. All right, I heard Tom's motion, I'll second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you wanna get to the budget revision, Ruth, and then?
Yeah, I sent y'all an overview, it's basically the revision includes coverage changes for PEIA, so that budget was increased. Auto cost because they're starting ones early, we'll have to pay that this fiscal year instead of next fiscal year. And then I add a hundred thousand dollar line item for contracted services and a little bit, but something related to the flood, so we can keep track of
Yeah.
Those.
Yeah, we.
I think we're at a hundred thousand dollar mark right now.
That's smart, we should have a separate account for that, just for ease of accounting.
And then I added the gasoline costs, like, we're a little higher, we should be at like sixteen percent, I think we're at twenty or seventeen, I don't remember. But I went ahead and added it even though gas costs are going down. And then the balance, I added fifteen dependencies. Let's see what happens with the Sheriff's Department brick repair, Memorial Building brick repair.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Never ending.
So I'll make a motion to approve the adjustments.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, moving on to get ready. Amanda with us? Again?
That's Tom.
I guess.
Oh, I thought. I thought it was Amanda and Tom.
Well, yeah, Amanda and Tom.
We can hear from Amanda if she wants to talk.
Well, do you wanna talk?
Well, we had some proposals on consultant project and ISPs partners. And we went through and rated all the ones we had, the proposals that we had. And I've got my ratings, some of them, in my opinion, qualified and some of them did not qualify. And I've got my, my list for us to make interviews with, I don't know whether anybody else has it, but I do have a list of who I think we should interview. Set of interviews with.
I sat down on Monday and Tuesday and this morning a little bit and went through all twelve of the proposals. There were three that stood out and then two that stood out as ISPs. So that was what I have narrowed it down to.
You guys have the same three in common, do you know? I haven't even seen the proposals yet, cause I haven't been.
It won't be too, I'll tell you what, I mean, I've got, I've got my ratings here.
Yeah, go ahead.
And the consultant, the two that I picked for consultant, one of those three, excuse me, hold on. Where is it? And I rated was Thompson, Litten, Design Nine and S and S Engineers for interviews.
Those are the same three you picked?
Same three I had. And the two for ISPs was CityNet and Get Ready, I mean, Gigabee.
Gigabee.
Those are the same, same ones I have, so we're in agreement.
Okay, so those are the interviews that we're planning to do next week that Ruth told me about?
Yes.
I invited Jeff Proctor to participate in those and he said that he could, since he's on the broadband council and has so much background and current, you know, data, you know, understanding of the whole thing. Hope you guys are cool with that.
Yes.
And he came and picked up the proposals too.
Yeah, he, he, I told him he could come pick them up and, and take a look and he was kind enough to set aside those two days for us to work on those.
Yeah, I think Amanda's gonna call after the day, after we approve the the interviews, she's gonna call and see if they can meet for the interview day.
Well, since I have it, I'm guessing that Amanda probably agrees with the two of you. Did she get a chance to look through them, or Amanda, did you?
Well, really, it's the commission's decision, she.
Okay. Well, I was just, since I didn't get a look through them, I, you know, I'm, I'm gonna go with your all's judgment, you both agreed and looked through them independently. So I think we oughta just keep it narrowed down to those ones that you picked for the interviews.
So Tom, go ahead and do the motion.
I make a motion for the consultant to interview
Thomas and Litten, Design Nine and Ed and Matt and Jerry.
And interview for the ISPs, the ISP partner is Gigabee and CityNet. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Ruth, we have a few minutes, if you wanna get back into exhibit.
All right, so we have a item on there, a letter regarding lease or purchase of property for solid waste. We don't really have a draft. I want to give you a draft, yeah? But y'all might want to decide what you wanted to put in it, or we can discuss that later on today. We'll do that now or move it to later?
Let's do that one till later.
Okay, the next thing would be the financial statement. Brad has finished it. He is awesome. He answered a lot of questions for us and I just need y'all to approve it so we can get it submitted to the paper and the auditor room next Monday.
My motion to approve, second.
All those in favor? Aye. I really liked how he broke everything down, that, that helped me understand a lot more.
Yeah, he answered a lot of questions. I really appreciate all this help.
That one did take a little.
A month, maybe a month and a half, I'm not sure. He started somewhere towards the end of June, but really the end of July, first half of August, because a lot of stuff's not available until that point.
Yeah, just wondering.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it was really thorough, it was a good job.
And this is the, this is the gentleman we approved to take care of things.
And he made some recommendations and some things to change, make things a lot easier.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so then I think the personnel discussion will still have an executive session on, we talked about doing that towards the end, and then the last thing is the stream cleanup invoices. Initially, you guys approved fifty thousand dollars and it has exceeded that.
Right, and, and we know it was gonna, it, it costs at least that to just do Scrabble Creek and then they still had Smithers Creek left to do. We, we tacitly, you know, approved informally so the work could keep going in case it rains again, so we're gonna have to do this stuff pro tonk. But under our emergency authority, we went ahead and agreed to, to allow that increase informally. So we're just now gonna vote to, you know, officially approve that. So I moved that we approved the additional funds for the cleanup that has already been in progress of Smithers Creek. Since Scrabble Creek was already taken care of.
An extra forty thousand. So it made it for a total of ninety.
Okay.
Yeah, it's.
Eighty thousand five ninety-three as of these two, without the watering, trash removal.
Do we wanna just approve it up to a hundred, just in case, and then we can, and then that'll give the flexibility? I mean, what do you think?
I don't have a problem.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, so, so I'll, I'm in my motion that we approve up to a hundred thousand dollars for the stream cleanup in total, so that includes the fifty we already approved, so an additional fifty.
All right, and I.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So.
Okay, what were you?
The original fifty thousand, the state reversed that and the second fifty thousand they won, so that's.
Right, but FEMA may, FEMA may if we, yeah.
Okay. All right, other than executive session, not all, I have the exhibit items.
Hey, Allison, if it's okay with you, Tom needs a break.
Okay, let me look at the time here, let's, let's break until nine thirty. All right, is everybody back?
Everybody except for Anthony.
Okay, we need to wait for Anthony for this next item.
Here's Anthony.
It's about time, Anthony.
All right.
It's nine thirty-one. I'm pretty, I'm pretty proud of everybody, cause had I been there, we would have been another five minutes, so. I know, so, all right, we're gonna start the nine thirty item, the petition to admit the copy of the last will and testament for the Reed probate. Anthony, were you able to review that?
Yes.
Did you see any issues? I didn't.
And they're here, actually. They're here, actually, the people that are coming.
No, I didn't, I didn't see any issues.
Okay, does anybody have, does, did you say there were people there who may wanna speak, or do they wanna speak?
They're the ones that asked for it to be admitted, I don't know if they have any anything to add.
Okay. Do they, can you tell?
No, they do not.
They don't.
Okay, when that case, I move that we approve the request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, since we have a lot of executive session stuff left and we have some time, why don't we go ahead and talk about the logo that's at ten fifteen, cause that's ours.
Folks, you're taking care of.
Well, we will know where, what.
Have a good day. Thank you.
Okay, so logo discussion, you wanna go ahead and hit that, since that's our item and we've got a lot of executive session on the agenda today that's not a public hearing. And we could also do the humane officer issue, probably.
Okay.
Ruth? Yeah.
So we received seventeen proposals for the logo, for designing the logo. But the last, one of the meetings we had talked about, maybe open it up for local
I'd like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see us open up local and get some ideas from locals and then maybe submit what some of the locals have done, maybe one local may have one part that, that we like, another local may have another part. And sometimes, somehow we maybe combine them, then use the RFPs to design around some of the local input.
You know, we have some wonderful artists in our area. And it would be, it would be really great to have their input, or perhaps one of their logos may, you know, fit what we need.
I know of at least one who was interested and I had even texted Amy to see if the RFP had closed. Because I, I, I think the word didn't get out on the street, but I think if I share it on Facebook and on the events of local Fayetteville page and some of the ones where, where the artists tend to follow, that, that the word may get out there, Amy's probably on that page too.
And two, the original RFP was for the logo and the website, and since the website, we could have just redo an RFP for a logo designed based on local input and put it out after you get the local input. That might be a better way to do that.
That's the way I would like to do it, yeah. Anytime that we can use Fayette County folks, I'd like to do that.
Well, and as Ruth pointed out, they have, the locals, you know, know the county, like, they're gonna be able to, you know, design something more poignant to who we are, what we're about.
And then we take the ideas, even if it's two separate logos, we have ideas of both separate logos, somehow then use the RFP or send an RFP out to take certain designs and certain logos and see how they can combine it and come up with one. As long as we get the approval from the two different artists who are submitting.
Right, right. That, is that okay, Miss Taylor? You like?
Yeah. Sounds good to me, so.
If I wouldn't go about doing it now.
Well, we probably just need to write something easy and like, rather than a formal request for proposal that we advertise and just put something on our Facebook page and, Amy, are you on that events of local Fayetteville page?
I am.
Okay, so and maybe post it on there, cause I mean, everybody in the county and also in other counties adjacent follow that page to see what's going on over here. So maybe some, and maybe ask the sheriff to share it, cause he has a huge following on his page. And just, you know, put it out that we are looking, we would like people to, we're looking for somebody to design our logo. You know, we have here in our community, the guy who designed the West Virginia State Quarter, Jamie Lester, he owns the art gallery down the street near Tank Hill and was the co-owner of Free Folk Brewery, also all that art at that brewery was his too. So we have some really stellar artists in this community that might be interested, but if we get the word out just and say and put it, and put a deadline on it, which, I mean, I would say, you know, gives, give them at least a month to come up with something, maybe a little longer, but.
Would it, would it, we have to do something legally to, to be able to use the design if they, if they even.
Well, if we if we pick it, I, I, if we pick it, I think then we could talk with whoever we pick to be able to use the designer, if we want elements of something from it. I mean, you know, Anthony, what do you think? But I, I, I think, you know, we, we might be able to, you know, put their name, you know, designed by whoever and, you know, credit them on our website on who designed it, but.
I mean, we would basically have to agree to whoever prepares the logo, I mean, I think we would have to agree to their terms and in as far as using it.
See, that's, I don't, I don't like that.
Well, we would, we would have to say some process, I mean, we would be able to to negotiate with them, determine, and we, and we can also tell. And we, and we can also tell prospective artists that, hey, this is, these are the terms that we're going to require and somebody's.
I would rather, I would rather do it that way, terms required to.
Yeah, me too.
They upfront that they agree to this, if we use it.
Right.
So there's no issues and they all go with us, obviously.
Right.
When they turn it in, that gives us a release to use it, it's selective.
But yeah, I mean, it's not that you want something good, if they place station.
You know, Becky, um, Becky Sullivan might have some insight, because you know, they do that Bridge Day thing, that competition for art to use for Bridge Day every year. And she, she probably has some, you know, language or requirements that she's already using for that, that we can use. Let's, let's push this a little bit and I'll text her um, right now and 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 see if I can get some information for us or see if she'll uh, join us.
Okay. Sound good. So I'll make a motion to. Take the logo to another date, which would be October the fifth.
Okay, sounds good to me, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I just sent her a text, so hopefully we can get that figured out. So now we have a bunch of time. Uh, let's do the humane officer issue. The eleven o'clock.
Yes. Basically, Wes, you guys ready for that?
Yes.
Essentially, what we are working towards, I mean, if you recall, one of the issues uh, humane society. Was dealing with and it impacts the county as well is situations where animals are seized. And the code essentially allows the animal to be treated as abandoned. If the owner is properly notified of their right to request a hearing and they do not request a hearing uh, within the five day period. And it simply requires an affidavit on the part of the humane officer. To give the magistrate the ability, assuming no request for a hearing is made, to enter an order. That deems the animal abandoned and which gives the shelter the ability at that point to put the animal up for adoption. So this is, and this is something that Wes and I have been working on to try to minimize the amount of time. That the animals have to be kept uh, at the animal shelter. The only potential problem we're dealing with on our end is the Supreme Court. Does not have a form order. Uh, available for the magistrates to use, uh, but we are working on preparing the form order to disseminate to the magistrate. So if we can get this in place, they will have the ability to simply pull up uh, the word document, make the appropriate changes, print it and sign it. So that's the purpose of asking for the resignation.
What are the other implications? Doesn't the humane officer have some other authorities by code?
I mean, it's realistically, I I don't think it's gonna be any different than what we're already doing. As far as um, how the seizure of animals is being handled. I mean, it, the primary, and and of course, their responsibilities and duties can be limited or expanded within the confines of what's allowed in the code by the sheriff's department. Or the county, uh, who ultimately is gonna be their employer, but but the primary reason we're doing this is to give us an ability to. Put the animals up for adoption quicker. In cases where somebody has had the animal seized and where they haven't asked for a hearing within the time for it.
I could swear that, and I don't have it in front of me, that there was, that when we were having the discussions about the animal shelter. Um, and getting some legal advice on that, that that the hu, that a humane officer had. Some type of law enforcement authority in the code that we weren't. Comfortable giving to our um, animal control officers, but I I don't remember what it is.
There is a difference in just a.
Right.
Go ahead.
Well, and and what we, I mean, at the end of the day, given the current um. Situation that we find ourselves in, we're kind of in a state of flux, obviously. I mean, it wouldn't be, I I mean, we could table this and I could certainly um, look into what, you know, look into your question and get you one answer at our next meeting.
Okay, I I I'd like to know the answer, cuz cuz if if not, maybe we could, I mean, and and if there are any workarounds or maybe. I mean, we might be fine with with Michelle issuing the citations and stuff, but she doesn't have, it's different to me because she's not a law enforcement officer, so. Um, designating her as a humane officer might be giving her authorities that she doesn't currently have. And um, and she doesn't currently have the training to execute those authorities. We may wanna get her the training, I just don't know the answer.
Right, well, we can, we can certainly look into that issue and and address it further at the next meeting, but but just to give you an idea of why we're asking for this and the direction we're heading. Is, we're trying to get this process set up so that the animals that are seized and which can be adopted. Can be adopted sooner rather than later.
Yeah, not take up space.
We wanna put it back on the fifth, oh, that should be funny time, and you know.
Okay.
The interesting thing is, we. Um, when I brought this to the attention of our magistrate clerk, she reached out to the Supreme Court asking about a form. And they, they basically sent her what seemed to be a canned response and did not address the the ultimate question and.
I'm gonna faint shock at that.
And we have reached out and asked for a form order and again, there, there doesn't seem to be a form order and I mean, it's, as you know, Allison, magistrate court is by and large formed grid. You know, it's set up so that the magistrates can pull up a form, complete the form with the appropriate information and then print it. But like I said, we're working on, we're working on developing our own form for the magistrates to use. But, you know, it hasn't been part of their, it hasn't been part of the magistrate's training to go through this process, or it's going to be. It's something of my um, intention to meet with everybody involved. Sheriff's Department personnel, the magistrates, uh, humane society and um, my assistants, so we can get. A process in place to speed this, speed up the ability of the animal shelter to put these animals up for adoption where the, the owners don't seem to take any kind of interest in what happens. But we'll, we'll look into the issue that you raised and we'll be prepared to have a more thorough discussion on October fifth, thank you.
Well, listen, Anthony, um, Anthony, Michael Taylor has already really seriously looked into it, you might just wanna give him a call.
Okay, and I could do that too.
Yeah, don't spend a whole lot of time researching it, cuz he could probably just answer it right off the bat, cuz he he explained it to us, I just don't remember the detail.
Yeah, and I I I've seen all that conversation.
Okay.
So, make, we need to make a motion and Tom, or make, make, make a motion to move uh, move it to October fifth, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, what, how are we doing on time?
Thirteen minutes.
Alright, well, it looks like we need to take a break, cuz I don't think we have anything else we can knock out that's not executive session. Is that right, Ruth?
I think you're right, yes.
Alright, let's go ahead and take a break until um, five minutes till ten, that way we can get started right at ten o'clock.
And all of the margins.
Okay, there we go. I was talking, but I was on mute. Alright, we're at ten o'clock, we ready to do the zoning discussion?
Yes. Okay, so we have a um, rezoning case, the case number is Z dash five three six dash twenty-two dash one. It's a request of Bradley Lowman to change his property from rural residential district to V three with his business tourism district. On property legally described at surface six point two nine Arbuckle Summer League track two district. Um, the planning commission met on September twelfth and Kevin Willis motion to deny the rezoning of RR to be free. Based on inadequate size of the road going in and out of the property and spot zoning, Josh Davis second, it was an anonymous decision. Mr. Lowman is here to speak and I do think there's a neighbor here to speak as well.
Okay.
He doesn't. That's Sharon.
Alright, um, go ahead and and bring Mr. Lowman up so he can speak. Yeah, thank you, yeah, I needed that too. What's the road that that was the concern on here? Is it that little one that goes from Almond or is it almond itself?
It's Lois Lane, it's the little, did you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the one eight, this is up and down, I think maybe bottom.
Well, it looks like the property might be able to be accessed from Beach Bottom Road, is that not the case?
That's not really accessible, Ruth.
Okay. Just a second. Alright, and hey there, Brad, um, I've met Brad before, I know his cousin Julie.
So.
Go ahead and.
Uh, so I thought through, um, I just handed brochures to the commissioners. Um, we went down, actually laid a tape measure on Almond Street and on Lois Lane. Both of them measure exact eleven foot, three inches of of the pavement. Excuse me, and we've also contacted the highway divisions and have been expressly uh, told that a two lane highway or two lane state road would be designated with a double line down the center of it. Of which Almond, Almond Street is not. Um, both roads, roads have burns on both sides, the brochures that I've handed to the commissioners. Um, show measurements of the amount of burns on the left hand and right hand side of Almond Streets and of Lois Lane. And then one of the other concerns was about local spot zoning. I've also looked up on Airbnb that there is currently four hundred and thirty, excuse me, four hundred and twenty-seven homes listed as active Airbnbs in the two five nine zero one zip code alone. We've also provided a letter of bank from the bank with their funding and their investment into the area. The zoning, after our zoning board recommendations last week, um, looked like there was three situations. Um, with the road, um, one also being security, uh, with our park, or not our park, but with our campground. Uh, we will have an onsite uh, person manager, um, is also. They will be working as security to maintain everything and the the number of guests will not, will see what we have on our contracts. Uh, we've also gone to the point that Josh, uh, Dell is an employee, um, who lives locally right here on Maple Avenue. He also has two homes within the two five nine zero ones that go, he will be also acting as a, an employee to maintain the security on the property. Uh, we're also adding a layer of of surveillance cameras on the property so that when I am not on site for the next few years. That I also have a layer of security, be able to see what's happening. And I've also listed, gone through and list gave a number of uh, local businesses that are within the half mile zone of where we are. One of the issues that the neighbors had brought up was security about school district. Where we actually have a two hundred room hotel directly across from the, from the school, as well as the New River Visitor Center. Two active bars within that hotel, um, all within walking distance of the school, so. Um, our property is within a mile of the property of the school zones. And so we've listed a number of other businesses, it's a landscaping company that's right there. I think, um, what else? I mean, part of the, the reason for keeping this so small is that. And within the next two to three years, we wanna put a house on the property for ourselves and make this our retirement property. So therefore, I would not want to live in amongst a crazy amount of, of stuff myself. Yes, uh, the pictures that you're seeing, those are our inventory of what we're putting on the properties, you can see that.
You can't live in those.
They are according to the building.
He did talk to Alan and they worked out to get it approved to meet those.
These are not sheds.
Okay, so where is, okay, that'll be a different subject, but uh. Everything that I've seen on these, uh, they are stamped on the inside that they're not inhabitable. So if you're gonna get these to meet the specs that the building inspector gives you, then. That's okay, but. I have other questions like the other folks do, um, but if if you're, if, or you have more to tell us about.
No, no, I'm happy to answer your question.
Okay, um, I would like to hear from, from the people who are against the property. Yeah, I I do have one question.
Sure.
I should try to, I, I. Is that rail trail right there?
Yes.
That it joins this property?
Yes, it is.
Okay, where's the nearest access to that rail trail right there?
It's Beach Bottom Road.
That's more of a path, isn't it?
That's the road that goes to Ballford, the old Hall.
Okay, and looking at, looking at this, there's, looks like there's some boundaries that are made for right of ways to that property. Am I right or wrong? And we looked into it, um, e- usually when you look at a map, sometimes right, sometimes wrong. Yeah, you see how it goes all the way around back out to the road? To me, that was designed as as a easement for property ownership, is it an easement or not? Has anybody looked at that? Not that I am aware of, but there should be a deed attached to that.
If you click on this, it actually attaches to the road too.
Okay.
I would say.
So I might be right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Now, I'm just. I'm, when I look at this property, I'm looking at it and seeing that there may have access in a different area. The only way you would know that, cuz that seems to be the issue they're talking about. There's not enough, there's, if it's too small for the traffic, there's more of the big issues, is that correct?
That's what they're saying, the perimeter deed is asking with.
That that, I'm trying to give you something to look at or to to eliminate one of the issues.
Sure.
I don't have time to do it. And if you go back and look at the deeds and see how, in the past, how the deeds are attached to the right of ways, cuz it's probably a right way, not a longer. I've looked at enough deeds that usually you can go back, you might have access, if that's a problem, you might have access another way to your property. I'm just throwing that out at you, maybe give an option on this. And that's what I would look at, I mean, just giving such, with the thought, if if, but I just wanted to see if anybody knew about that. Does anybody in here even know that there, has done research on it, see if there's another access to the property?
That's what I was thinking, just looking at it, it looked like there had to be another way with its size.
And it could be designated to you or to that piece of property, it could be six deeds before yours, you got it? And you know what I'm saying? I mean, you just got to look at your past deeds, and some of them precede the other deed, and you have to look back. So, but anyway, I just wanted to throw that and see if you even knew that. I'm sorry, that's the only question I have.
Okay, well, let's let the, let's let some of the people there speak, and then, and then if Brad has anything else to add, we can let him come back up.
What's up, brother? How you doing, man?
Good, how are you guys? Okay, my name is Rick Cornell. I'm, my property is directly across the street from Mr. Lowman, where he's. I have, I don't, I think you guys have it, that we had a quick petition just for everybody on the road and around the corner of Almond Street, and a letter that everybody kind of agreed on. He talks about the lowest lane. There is no shoulders on Lois Lane himself. It's just yards and like ditches and moat. So there's, really, there's no way for two cars to pass on that road. But the biggest thing is almost everyone on that road has little kids. We've been there for 20 years, and the kids play in the road, riding bicycles and all that kind of stuff. And you know, if you've had eight or 12 rentals, and I mean, the people going in and out of there from out of state, they have no clue to watch the kids and all that kind of stuff. Also, Almond Street, I'm not sure if you've ever rode out of Almond Street, but it is the main entry and exit for the Oak Hill Hospital. Any of the kids that drive, any of the parents that drop off is on the street. And it is like playing dodgeball if you go out there at a certain time. And you got to get off the road. There's three-foot distances that they dug on both sides of the road for drainage. It's, and there's blind curves numerously and bright blind peels as well. The national average that I looked up, it just says that check-in is usually between two and four on an Airbnb, on a, some kind of rental company. Well, that's the exact time that the high school lets out. So that would be pretty dangerous and fierce on Almond Street. Like I said, because the kids fly on that road, it's, I mean, it's just, you know, pretty bad. Mr. Lowman himself has told me, you know, the reason he wants to move out of Delaware is because that it's overpopulated and so grown up and you can't do anything, but yeah, that's kind of what he's wanting to do to us right here in this little, little small residential area. So that's, I mean, the only last thing, I think you guys have a letter that I had penned up from Barry and Amy Fink. It now been called the last time I was here, that it's the gated community going down Beckwith. I can't, I don't know the name of it, but they live up in there with half a million dollar home. There's some Airbnbs that they're now renting up there, and it's constant, like they're having to call the police due to gunshots and partying and stuff like that. And I'm just, we're just kind of scared in our neighborhood. You know, these are going to be small cabins, and they're going to be a whole lot cheaper than, you know, it's half a million dollar home up in the gated community. So we're just kind of worried about what we might have to deal with. And, you know, I know he said that one of his, his kinfolk is over here on Maple Avenue, and and I mean, I know, I'm not saying that he won't take care of problems over there, but that's not saying that problems will arise. But that's kind of the whole, the whole neighborhood's outlook on it. I think they kind of just picked me to talk. I don't know why. I guess I'll be the butthole. I don't know. And it's nothing towards Mr. Lowman. I mean, he's a great guy. He, you know, he's, and I'm not against tourism. I'm not against growth or whatever. I just, I just, you know, if you, if you zone it commercial, well, who's to say next month there's not a bar in there? Or who's, you know, it could be anything put in there, and it's, it could just, you know, get out of hand. That's the only thing I have to say.
Done good. They picked the right, they picked the right person.
How many people actually live on Lois Lane?
There's seven.
There's seven houses?
Yeah.
Okay, I have Garrett, Calvert, Winston, Webb, Fennell, and Painter. So I'm missing one house.
The one house is actually right on the border. And they probably have the almond tree. It's the, um, but their land is connected to the gear.
Is there anyone else you'd like to speak for or against? Mr. Lowman's coming back to talk out.
Okay.
So to answer some of these security questions that we have about Airbnbs, and it is true, the property where I live in currently in Delaware, we have 210 homes in our neighborhood. We have currently 20 Airbnbs in the neighborhood. I can honestly tell you, having been involved with the good and the bad of Airbnbs, this is one of the expertise where I come in, that I do know how to handle overcrowding, overpopulation of these cabins. A, based on the fact that the contracts state only four people per camper, maximum of six in the cabins. If anything changes beyond that, they're asked to go immediately. There's no reason that I am going to have my property fee to, to no end. Also, the fact that the Airbnbs, the households, there's nobody on site to regulate them. I can tell you this, most of the times where I live, most of the owners are three hours or two to three hours away.
Out of state.
Out of staters or other end of staters, which falls on the HOA, which is what I'm part of the HOA. So I am the one that has to deal with the police. I am the one that has to physically go down and remove the people from the properties. I have been involved in this for 10 years, so I know what I'm up against on this.
So you're, you're talking about the service, right?
It's the same everywhere. All Airbnbs are the same. So with, with that being said, what we experience is you'll get one or two people will rent a house, and then next thing you know, you're getting a phone call from the neighbors that there's 20 to 22 people in there, which then brings me and the police involved. And again, there's nobody there to police the properties, whereas we'll have an onsite manager, with a second layer of security, and a third layer with camera securities. As far as adding additional roads in, that is something we can look into. See what might be a possibility, if maybe we can get something into the turn parking lot. I'm not sure.
What type of sewer are you going to have there?
We had to go with septic systems.
And how, of septic, so you're going to do six different septic systems?
There's five.
Five, okay.
Soon as this property is going to, the 2-13-7.
Yeah. Keith, from what I understand, Mr. Lester has purchased the additional track.
They haven't been transferred yet, but the gentleman that owns the prior was Nova Homes Park. I think he wasn't in five.
So he's going to have Nova Homes there probably. I mean, if you, if you're a guessing person, you don't, you know, I mean, if you're, what do you take a rocket scientist to figure it out if he?
Now, there's also another trailer park on Almond Street, also, one horse turns on the road, Hilton Dale is there. And that was recently purchased by the same people that had bought Mr. Lester's trailer park.
Do you have any other questions, John, or anything?
No, I don't. I don't have any more questions.
Mr. Taylor, you got any?
I don't have any questions, but I, I mean, it just seems like with that other street there, that there's got to be some other option with this property. I, I'd like to be, I'd like to go out there and take a look and, and just see what that road looks like. And, and I, and I do want to comment too, I don't understand what relevance the Finks letter from, from the development over in Beckwith has anything to do with this. I, I don't think, you know, their experience there is necessarily going to be the same as our experience in the town of Fayetteville versus somebody's experience out in the country. So I'm, I thought, I thought I was, I was going to be surprised that the Finks had moved to that neighborhood, because I bought my house from them when they moved off of Route 16. But now that they're over in that other neighborhood, I still, I don't see the relevance at all of that letter, so I hope the planning commission did not consider it. I'm sure Carl Harris knew enough not to advise them not to, but anyway, I, I would like to move that this be postponed to our next meeting. Well, Angela, how much time do we have to give notice for a public hearing?
For rezoning, it's just 15 business days in the paper for another public hearing.
Do we have enough time between now and the next meeting? We might not.
I don't think we do. No, I don't think we do, but the second.
On this, second meeting in October. Could, do you guys mind if we do that? Because I, I'd like to know more, and that, maybe Mr. Lowman can look into the, the issues that Commissioner Luis has brought up. And, and we may, you know, even consider referring this back to Planning Commission if we find out stuff the Planning Commission didn't have to consider, but I, I feel like that we just need more information to make this decision.
Yeah, I don't mind, I don't mind looking further into it. I do want to ask you one other question. And I've seen somewhere about, read somewhere about issues with Oak Hill City, or maybe I've read so much in the day now, I just, sometimes it goes together. Have you asked about the one in the city vote here? Do you, uh, do you want to even sit in Oak Hill?
No, I'm just curious. No, I, I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
You'd be in part of the city of the New Orleans.
I'm just curious, yeah.
The only thing, if I remember correctly, when, anytime you do a small or a small, what is it, minor boundary adjustment, you're only allowed to do one every two years.
I don't, I don't know. I know they changed the law and all this old stuff.
And I'm, I'm, pardon my English. What, what does the Anna say into, you know, what does, what does that provide?
I don't know. If they're, if they're, if, no reason I ask this, sometimes that brings up too much. The only reason I ask this is if they are allowing Airbnbs throughout Oak Hill, which I think, I mean, we had discussions, I think, the past week, John, you asked me why they didn't do it.
Yeah.
I told you, I gave you my input. Then they would probably allow you to do it.
So theirs would be the same thing, because it would be Airbnb to the cat.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
The process would be similar, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Okay, so it would just be a different body that you'd be dealing with besides, instead of us, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just curious why.
That's fair. I didn't know anything about.
I mean, just.
But Allison, to answer your question, if you would like to go out and visit the property, I'd be happy to meet you out there at any time.
Okay, I'll be back next week, so maybe sometime next week, or definitely before our meeting. When does, when is our next meeting? It's in late October.
Well, we got 5th and the 9th, the 5th.
The 19th.
I've got the 19th tied up, you know, pretty much the whole day with the 911 center in filming, so.
This ought to be pretty quick though, don't you think? By the time we get it?
Once you get your information, and, and I understand you want to look into it, I don't have a problem with that. I shouldn't take, yeah, the meeting shouldn't take long.
I'll go by, I'll go by most of the roads and everything again, too, and look at the other access points.
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, the only compelling thing I heard, I mean, the kids, yes, but you can put signs up like you do everywhere else. I mean, we, we have a hill in my neighborhood that's pretty treacherous, and you do the best you can. It's there on East Maple where we've been talking about. And, you know, like I said, the figs, it is significant that the neighbors oppose it, so many of them oppose it, but I would like to see the side of the road, because we can't just, I don't want to get in the habit of doing this all over the county and preventing people from setting up businesses for just, I don't know, I don't know. I just want to take a look at it and see if there's other way to access the property, if there's a way to mitigate the road in some way. I just want to see what it looks like.
I mean, honestly, with the easement that's on each side of Lois Lane, it could be gravelled and be identical to Almond Street.
Would you be willing to pay for that?
It would be something I would look into, yes. Absolutely. Absolutely. And I had even mentioned to the couple of the neighbors that one of the things that we are doing within our own neighborhood in Delaware, and not because of Airbnbs, just because we have a problem with speeding in general, we even have gotten to the point where we have a local police officer who is designated to our community directly, knowing about speed limit problems and that people just, when they're on vacation, feel not my town, not my, not my laws. We're actually spending $10,000 to put speed bumps in our community. If that is an issue, I would be willing to look at speed bumps, even if it's the temporary removals. Those are approximately $300 to $400 a piece.
So you're well versed in those already?
I am.
Yeah.
First initiative, no idea.
Okay.
Right down to.
Well, now.
Tell you how pavement should be paved and put in.
He, he didn't have this plan when I met him, but, but we did discuss the other, the Delaware stuff, so, you know, he, I can, I can vouch that he is well-versed in this type of stuff, because we had a long conversation about it. So I'm going to go ahead and move that we postpone this, this item and, and re-advertise it, public hearing for October 19th meeting. We can go ahead, do it again at 10:00 PM like we did this time. Will you be in town, will you be able to be in town, Brad, or would you like us to put it in November?
As soon as possible would be the best, I mean.
Okay, well, that's the soonest, given the notice requirement we have.
Allison, the time may need to change.
My name is Taylor. 10:00 AM.
I've tied, I've tied the day up from 10:00 on, so maybe we can go.
Want to do it at 9?
In. Well, is it?
It just seems to be AM. Yeah.
Yeah.
9:15.
Okay, okay, we'll do his at 10:00, if I can start mine, I guess, 10:15.
We could start his earlier if you want to.
We can do, we can do kids in the public hearing, we, I'll go ahead and.
Well, we have. Allison, we have to start at the Memorial Building at, at 8:15 on the 19th.
What? Are you serious?
The, the election equipment.
Yeah.
House bails. Nobody told me that. All right, hold on. On the 19th. I got to fix that now, or I would not be there. So 8:30.
That way, it shouldn't take long.
All right. So Memorial Building at 8:30, huh?
I didn't see that. Yeah, we need to test the equipment. So what time will Mr. Lowman be back on that day? So it'll be at 10:00 o'clock on that day.
AM.
On the 19th, AM.
February 19th at 10:00 AM?
Yes.
Thank you, folks. Really appreciate being with you today.
All right, thank you. Okay, did, did I get a second? Did we move? Because I moved it, we move it, but I didn't get a second. Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah, aye, aye.
Aye. All right, now where are we? I guess it's time for executive session, right?
Hopefully.
Right, all that's executive session material, I think. Right? Yes.
It's the 2:30 to 10:45.
Yes.
5:00 or 8:00.
I think everything left is executive session, isn't it?
Item, item 5.
Yeah, we did that one already. We moved, um, We moved, uh, um. What did we decide we were going to do on that letter? Are you just going to try to get something together for us? Because I haven't seen a draft yet. Okay, well, let's, let's get, put that one on the next meeting, um, and we'll have the draft ready.
Move the letter to October fifth.
Second, all those in favor? And if you, Amy, if you get it to me soon, I'll, I'll edit it, circulate it, so we'll have something assigned. Okay, um, so the rest is executive session, um, so at this time after whatever break my colleagues need. What, what's going on? I know, I see something going on with John now.
Mr. Woffel, Mike.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to move that we go into executive session to discuss the following things. Um, the, with the Wolfel firm regarding the opioid litigation settlement. Um, and that's with counsel, so we're getting legal advice on that. Then we have another at ten forty-five with counsel Mike Callahan regarding the hazmat spill on the term fight. And then the final executive session item is with regard to some personnel changes and um, salary matters. So um, I moved that we go into executive session, you guys just call me when you get in there, when you're settled. And uh, I did invite Dr. Stewart to come participate in the opioid litigation.
Yep, she's here.
Okay, yeah, she, I, I got a text that she was there, I just wanted to let you guys know, I invited her to attend.
Okay, good.
All right, executive session it is. Man, can you get? Yeah, I have my little thing that Becky gave us that covers up the camera. All right, so we're back on the record, eleven thirty-five from executive session, no decisions were made. Um, we discussed three matters while we were in executive session, three that I mentioned previously, um, but that I will repeat. One was the opioid litigation lawsuit. Uh, Mr. Woffel, Senator Woffel is there, um, he explained to us, um, the settlement. Just about every county in the state has already signed a release for the settlement. Um, we're not real pleased with the distribution formula, but that ship had sailed and was not something we could contest. Um, so therefore, I'm going to go ahead and move that we uh, approve and sign the release for the settlement. Um, so we, Fayette County can start receiving distribution on that. All those in favor? All right, so Ruth, if you'll stamp for me.
Are we going to do the letter too, Miss Taylor?
Uh, yes, I was going to just wait until counsel, um. Well, yeah, we were going to have that prove, prove it in advance, I'm glad you reminded me. So uh, the other thing was, um, because we do have some concerns about the distribution formula and um, wanted to raise those with the legislature. We're having our um, our counsel prepare a letter for the legislature, for our signatures, um, that we are going to prove. We already know what the contents will be, just stating what our actions are and our concerns. Um, and so I'm going to move that we um, approve the letter. We discussed the executive session with the contents about our concerns about the distribution formula, um, to be sent to the legislature by our counsel. All those in favor? Okay, and, and everybody's cool with Ruth stamping once we all see a draft of it?
Yes, yes.
All right, so moving on to issue two. Just with our other lawyer, Mike Callahan over the phone, um. He filed a lawsuit on our behalf with regard to the hazmat spill. We discussed um, the data that he needs to support that suit. Um, he already had some, but we want to give him some additional data. Uh, we didn't make any decisions about that, but what he does need us to do is create a sub fund in case there are any um, proceeds that uh, come from that lawsuit. So I'm going to move that we uh, authorize Ruth to create the sub fund for the spill event. Um, according to our, our standards. All those in favor? Okay, the last one is the long one, um, and I've got to pull up a document because I messed up and got rid of it. All right, so we discussed several personnel changes, um, recommendations by county administrator. We've previously told her that um, that the county we've hired her as our executive officer to run the county and we'd like her to make recommendations to us about what she would like to do to do that well. Um, she's done a great job so far and she had some recommendations that she discussed with us in executive session. And I'm going to um, put those on the record now and then we will vote on them. Um, one is, we have a vacancy uh, as a payroll clerk. And uh, Ruth is going to post a um, position when she's ready to train that person. Um, right now, she's trying to learn the system herself, but um, so I'm going to move that we approve that she posts a position for payroll clerk. All those in favor? Okay, in the meantime, um, we have an employee, um. Gia who has been um, assisting Ruth in a lot of the responsibilities with regard to um, not just payroll, um, but accounting for the county. She took Ruth's place as CFO when Ruth left. Um, Ruth would like to place Gia over the payroll clerk once hired. Um, and, and uh, increase her position responsibilities to involve review, approval of payroll as well as payroll vendor and tax payments. Um, she's also, for the time being, going to start um, conducting some of the basic AR, HR functions of uh, new employee orientation, doing the paperwork, benefit enrollment, uh, budget verification and those sorts of things. Gia has been performing at a very high level since she was hired. And uh, Ruth has recommended that with these additional responsibilities and given Gia's performance that we increase her pay to what?
Forty-four, seventy, ninety-six.
Okay, was that what the six thousand dollars? So I move that we um, approve the expansion of Gia's responsibilities and the um, pay increase to be effective. Immediately at this, we're going to have to modify the payroll that we just approved because it wasn't included in it since we hadn't voted. Um, but Ruth would like to, her uh, pay to start this pay period. All those in favor? Okay, secondly, um, we have an employee, Wilbert, who took over a lot of the data entry that Gia had previously been doing in addition to the responsibilities that we hired him for approximately six months ago. Um, he's also done a lot of work toward um, streamlining our paperwork and things down there. Um, he was hired for general assistant receptionist position. Ruth has already expanded his responsibilities once she saw what he was capable of and has recommended um, a salary increase for him, and Ruth, what was that salary increase?
It'll be two dollars on the hour.
Okay, so a two dollar an hour sour, salary increase for Wilbert also affected this pay period, which would affect the, the payroll we approved. Um, that's the date she would like that to start, so I move that we approve that. All those in favor? Okay, um, we have already taken away the farmland protection um, responsibilities from both Abby and Amy. In doing so, that was going to take some salary away, so I move that we um, compensate and, and keep, to keep Amy at her current salary. And that's effective, uh, well, immediately, obviously, just keep her at her current salary. All those in favor? Okay, and we've revamped Abby's job. Um, our park director has decided he does not want to be park director anymore and he would like to go back being the operations manager. Um, that's Wayne, so first, um, I want to move that we uh, restore Wayne to the operations manager position and um, reduce his pay to his salary when he was operation manager. And that's effective October first, all those in favor? Um, Abby has applied along with others to be the parks and recs director. I think she's really well qualified for this job, Ruth has had multiple discussions with her and she has had great ideas. Um, therefore, I move that we approve Abby to be the park and recreations director. At what salary, Ruth?
Thirty-eight initially, and she will be um, eligible for a review after her six months for a raise.
Okay, and that raise would be effective October first as well? So I move, I move that we do that under the conditions that Ruth just outlined. All those in favor? Okay, and, and Amy will be absorbing the rest of Abby's duties and will be under review in the future for salary increase. Then on to temporary maintenance, um, we have several people out in maintenance, um, due to illness or injury. And um, so we need to hire a temporary maintenance worker, Ruth has identified a candidate, his name is Ed Russell. He's willing to work at eleven dollars an hour, he's a former stoner.
It's actually a part-time permanent.
Okay, so I read temporary maintenance and then I, okay, so part-time, thank you, part-time permanent. Um, he's semi-retired, he's pretty stoked about being here, he reminds Ruth of Ricky who we know works really hard. He's a former stone mason, um, did historic building masonry. Anything better than that, because should we coincidentally have a bunch of those around? Um, so I move that we approve that hire at the salary Ruth said, and what's the date effective, Ruth?
As soon as he can start.
Okay, um, at whatever date Ruth can get in here. All those in favor? Um, is there anything else, Ruth, that I get them all?
I think you got them all.
Do you have a motion to adjourn? All right, we're out. Bye, everybody.